This time we'll call the meeting to order if we could have a roll call.
Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mr. Oppel. Mr. Oppel?
Here.
Mr. Minotti?
Here.
Mrs. Yolesch?
Here.
Dr. Ritter?
Here.
Mrs. Koutas?
Here.
Mrs. Hack?
Here.
Mr. Diwella?
Present.
And Mrs. Kilmartin.
Present.
All right, at this time if we could please stand and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. At this time I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before we approve the agenda, I have two things to consider. Number one, under item 8A, we are replacing number six with the new addition. To read the consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Mohegan School, a donation from Mohegan School PTO of two outdoor adjustment height basketball hoops for the playground, approximate cost of $4,000. All costs to be incurred by the Mohegan School PTO. The replacement is because we inserted the word "two" outdoor adjustable height basketball hoops. The second one, we want to add the following motion to be number nine. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Mohegan School, a donation of $3,500 from the Mohegan School PTO to purchase guided reading books for classroom.
All right, a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Question?
It's on top of page three.
Hold on, I've got a second, okay, discussion.
Not, well, actually not in your change, but do we need another motion to waive the one month waiting period up for the policy committees?
That can be done as part of that.
Part of it, okay.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Sensing none, we'll vote first on the amendments. All in favor of the amendments to the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we'll vote on the motion as amended, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, okay. Okay, presentations and recognition, Dr. Colette.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recognize this evening some of the individuals that have been awarded academic stipend appointments. These are important parts of our school community and I'd like to ask these individuals to please stand as I read their names. Jerry Kelly as the advisor of the National Honor Society at Shelton High School. Dr. Brittany Little as the advisor of the National Honor Society as well, Shelton High School. Emily Meyerson, Assistant Band Director, Shelton High School. David Perch, Advisor, Junior Class, Shelton High School. Christopher Testani, Technology Integrator at Elizabeth Shelton. And then the athletic stipend positions, yay, Mr. Testani, all right. And athletic stipend appointments include Lindsay Akampora for interscholastic coach of girls' basketball, as well as Jonathan Popoly, Assistant Coach, Freshmen Boys Basketball. We thank you all for wanting to be involved in our school community and we know you bring a lot to the table, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our public hearing and we allow up to five minutes for any person who would care to address the board and this is according to Board Policy Number 9325. As a reminder, no Board of Education employee, student, or community member should be defamed within the public comment. Would anybody care to address the board? Would anybody care to address the board? Looks like we have a paper. And you know the drill, but just as a reminder.
Okay, I have two issues on Deborah Keller. Let's see, I'm wearing my teacher hat tonight and my SDA president hat tonight. I'll do my SDA thing first. Please remember tomorrow night's our big night, our forum for meet the candidates at the intermediate school. We want to thank you very much for allowing us to use the building. Jamie and I are all ready to go. We are using his students, the junior statesmen, as our timers and our questionnaires and we're all pretty psyched about it. I've been sending messages out to all my Shelton teachers so that I think we'll have a good crowd and I think it'll be a very informative evening. Now, for my teacher hat. Part of my assignment at Perry School, Perry Hill, and every teacher has a duty assignment, is I have cafeteria duty. Cafeteria duty is a very interesting duty. And the way we're assigned, we are assigned to specific tables of kids that we are responsible for and responsible in the sense that they, you know, they raise their hand, can I go to the bathroom? Could you open up my serum? You know, the usual stuff. So we were chatting today and we were just talking about school lunch, which is fine, some bring, some buy, whatever. Is there any way, as of, this is our first year this is not happening, that we could have, what's it, Wissin? Could they send the schools the menu so it could be posted someplace? I mean, right now, we walk in and hot luck, whatever it is, and I'm at the door that's supposed to tell them what to eat or what's on the menu and I don't know. So if you, could you get it, if you could send it to the schools and have the schools print it?
That's unusual.
Not a lot, you know, don't make 100 copies or anything like that, but could we post it on a wall so the kids would know or I would know?
I would imagine they would, I'm surprised.
I will look into it. And yes, I mean, it sounds like a more than reasonable request and I, so much so that I thought it was being taken care of. Some of the students seem to know in some schools what the, some parents. We'll find out.
Some parents have found things online and have occasionally posted links to it on your mom's page. I wasn't aware that it was as much of a secret as it apparently is.
We should be able to get a hard copy printed out.
Yeah, I mean, even if you could give it to the schools and the admins could be in charge of making sure it just, it's on the door down there so it's not, you know, when they come in, they're hungry, they want to know what they're going to eat.
I can't say anything negative of what you're saying, it's a good idea.
So I think it could be something we should consider doing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Judge?
Judson Crawford, H. Jordan Avenue. The, I just wanted to say, the board having the thoughts to get the Sunnyside School roof completed as far as it is right now, you're one step ahead of Mother Nature as of what transpired last night. And so that's all I have to say to you at the moment.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Sensing none, we'll move on. Okay, next item is approval of minutes and we have attached in our packets the minutes of the special meeting of September 27th, 2017, the regular meeting of September 27th, and also a special meeting of October 4th.
So moved.
Motion has been made to approve.
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Communications to the board, we had a thank you note that came from Sunnyside School for the mulch and the swing set that was installed and actually it's a pretty cool look at swing set, so I'm sure they're very happy with that.
It's a big improvement.
It is, the old one was very rickety. Okay, superintendent's reports and action items.
Very good, Mr. Chair. Just a brief update on the strategic plan. We are working together, we have had a core steering committee group meeting. We are working on embedding and clarifying the milestones. We're calling the milestones, the various points along the path in a student's life where they are, they can anticipate things that they will experience, be it doing a presentation or learning how to keyboard or how to code and other things. In addition to, at the high school level, the high school administration has come up with a good plan to move the capstone project to grade 11 so that the students would have the following year to consider some of the things that they discover during their capstone project. There's much more to it than that, but I thought that those things would be important for you to know and we are working on a, we think, a very engaging visual, digital and hard copy visual depiction of what the pathway for students looks like in Shelton and what the milestones are. And we're very pleased to have Core Steering Committee member Anne Gatos, who's with us tonight, helping us, guiding us really, on designing this visual depiction and we're very thankful for her work. It's really quite an attractive piece, which we will, when it's finished, be sharing with the board and the community, of course. And we think that should happen by next meeting, so you should have it soon. Tonight we have a special presentation by our central office, Special Ed Administrators of Special Ed and Support Services. It's very complex work, as you all know. Recently, our finance director, Ed Drapp, and our administrators for Special Ed, both Elizabeth Hanaway and Janice Simonetti and I met before the Board of Aldermen and gave an update on the budget on the district in general and on Special Ed specifically, that was well received. With that said, tonight, the two Special Ed administrators are going to do an overview of what they do and what our services are in the district and I think we need to move out of the way so the screen can be utilized. And so you'll want to see it, all right? So let's move out of the way if you would like and, I'm just going to step forward.
Are you okay, Ray? Are you okay?
Yes.
Yes, double sided. Oh, wait a minute.
You only have one.
All right. Yes. They are the same. I'll cast the standard mark.
That might be a little, that might be a little. Is it okay if we keep the back one lit?
Yeah.
They need that piece.
Oh, that's.
That's her chichi. She would have been in trouble with that.
I said to you, that's a blue. That's all the same.
I said, I love it, double sided, black and white, I'm so proud of you guys.
Okay, so we're happy to be here tonight and Janice and I are going to be talking about, we've been here in front of the board a number of times where we've given overviews of our programming and, well, we're happy to talk about that every day of the week. We thought tonight we would focus particularly on what we call our special programs, which is a subset within special education where we spend a lot of time, in particular, Janice spends a lot of time supporting students in the van. So that's what we're going to focus on tonight. What you received, the front to back document, is what we shared with the Board of Aldermen when we presented in front of them a couple of weeks ago. The, we could say the front page is data about prevalence rates specific to Shelton as well as to the state. And then back is just some brief information about our main avenues of service and some examples of students who have moved into district and their profiles. Okay, so tonight we are going to spotlight what we call our special programs and we're going to talk about the five program models within that, the referral process for our special programs, feedback we've received from parents and some student outcomes. We want to caveat, or provide a caveat prior to getting into the program models that in all special education programming, academics is the number one focus at all times. So you're going to see that we're not going to be maybe highlighting academics as much as we typically would when we start talking about the program models. That's not because academics isn't a focus, academics is a given. We're going to be highlighting the in addition to academics. So all students spend a heavy amount of time in their academics, no matter what the special education program that may mean towards grade level benchmarks, that may mean below grade level benchmarks, in some cases it may mean above if they're duly exceptional. And then accommodations and modifications are given as needed. But I wanted to preface our conversation with that comment. And to provide a little bit of recent history, which many of you, you know, experienced and Janice knows better than any of us here, about our specialized programming in the district and where it was and how it led to where we are today. The high school had a, and has had, what was previously called the Behavior Modification Program, that existed for a very long time. Ripken School is where we are right now and that existed for a very long time, very successful. Ripken School had closed and as a result, three special programs were opened elsewhere in districts, the pre-K, Life Skills, and Transition. And then the Behavior Modification Program, similar to the high school, was added at ESS. And that was, you know, I would say the last 15, 15 years kind of condensed, maybe even longer, 20 years condensed. And this is outside of our, what we call adjusted curriculum programming, which is for, let's say, 85% of our special education population participates in the adjusted curriculum. And so this was what the history had been for our specialized programs. You want to talk about the program models?
So the five models, we have our pre-K program, that's housed at Mohegan School. There are four classes for three to four-year-olds. The pre-K experience fosters a child's overall development, including literacy and readiness for kindergarten curriculum. And as you can see, the population, the staff who are involved.
And this is truly our most inclusive environment and it's considered a multidisciplinary program. All domains, language, motor, social, academics, behavior, are all worked on within the pre-K environment. And we have disabled and non-disabled peers in the same classroom, but there is very limited what we call pullout. Kids coming out of the classroom to receive specialized services, it exists. In particular for speech or motor, but as much as possible, we educate students in that one environment. And early childhood certified teachers, their wheelhouse is that notion of multidisciplinary. That's their thing, they have a very multidisciplined perspective and so that's why the classrooms are designed that way.
The Life Skills Program is located throughout the district. We have one at Long Hill, Fury Hill, SIS, and SHS. And typically it's designed for students who are significantly below grade level in all domains, such as academic functioning, self-help, communication, and life skills. The program is based on addressing students' individual needs and these may include, but are not limited to, daily living skills, food preparation, self-care, personal hygiene, feeding, eating, community awareness, functional reading and math, and recreational nature.
The concept of functional is key in the Life Skills Program. These students require an intensive amount of time in service, but also a wide breadth of services. So we have to be as efficient as possible with their service time and everything we teach them has to be very functional for them in terms of use. The notion of abstract is not as useful in the life skill setting. So for example, students are taught skills within the context of another functional environment. Communication within the context of, you know, having a meal with somebody else. Practicing math skills within the concept of cooking, things like that. Oops, sorry.
Our Alternative Learning Center is located at ESS and on Sunnyside. And students are typically on the autism spectrum. The school day is highly structured, very predictable, and focused on social communication and emotional regulation and foundations for learning and relating to others. Students appropriate for this program often have low to moderately high intelligence. They present difficulty with pragmatic and expressive language skills. They have poor coping skills and self-regulation.
A question that often comes up about the alternative program is that do all students at the elementary level who are artistic participate in one of the alternative programs? And the answer is no. The vast majorities of students in our elementary schools who are on the autism spectrum participate in our adjusted curriculum programs because we're able to design programming that's appropriate for them and that they can stay as close to their peers as possible. The alternative program is reserved for those students who require even more intensive than that and require things like applied behavior analysis, which is a behavior shaping method, intensive sensory integration supports and things like that.
And all of their academics are within this program, not out, not included?
Not necessarily, that's a good question. Some students receive all academics as part of the alternative program. Some students can participate in some academics, either as with, in the adjusted curriculum or even within general education. We find that many of these students are what we call hyperlexic, meaning that they learn to read at a very, very young early age and the rote skill of reading came very easily to them. So something like our foundations at the K-2 level is a great place to initially integrate.
Our Therapeutic Learning Center is located at Booth School, Perry Hill School, SIS, and SHS. Students appropriate for this program have emotional, social, or behavioral needs. These behavioral needs may manifest through internalizing or externalizing behaviors. They require heavy counseling, either within a group or individually. They often have rapid mood swings, they show low self-esteem, limited interest in daily activities. These students may not recognize boundaries and relationships. They may be overly defensive. They have weak problem solving and decision-making skills. So, and a lot of these students sometimes have trauma in their lives.
Social workers are really critical in a therapeutic program. They are daily supports to the program. They provide, in some cases daily, if not weekly, counseling, individual, group, and co-taught lessons between a special ed teacher, with a special ed teacher. But where I find them most helpful is in working with outside agencies and outside providers because for some of these kids, the service doesn't end once the school day ends. They may receive a lot of supports outside of school and the social workers help us a lot in collaborating with that.
Our Transition Program, 18 to 21-year-olds, is housed here at Central Office and some students are at Shelton High School. These students are our most complex disabled students who have completed their high school graduation requirements. And special ed is not limited to classroom. So our students have been placed in educational and vocational training opportunities. And those include the Spooner House, Walmart, McDonald's, my sister's place, the Senior Center, Wells Hollow, Bedeesham, Lambchets, and Caligrosen, just to name a few places.
Okay. So as far as, how does a student end up in a specialized program? We have two main referral avenues. One is that once a student immediately enters a district, it's clear that they need a special, a more highly designed program and so we recommend one of the specialized programs immediately. Sometimes the referral comes after the adjusted curriculum programming has been attempted and is either deemed not appropriate or not successful. And when that happens, there's a very thorough referral review process. There's a lot of collaboration between what we call the sending and the receiving teams. There's observations done by each. So the sending school will go observe the program of interest and the receiving school will come observe the student in their current setting. Parent observation and interviews are included. There's a lot of student record review and data analysis. If we feel we've gone through the previous steps and it might be a good fit, we then have the student visit to see how they respond in the setting. If needed, we may contact, conduct further evaluations as another piece of information to make the decision. We take very seriously the decision because especially at the elementary level, going from the adjusted curriculum program to a specialized program may mean moving your neighborhoods, out of your neighborhood school. And that's a very big decision for any family, so we try to make sure that we're as thorough as possible prior to that happening. So some feedback we've received from parents is that they feel it's important to them that their child be continued, to continue to be in the school closest to their neighborhood. If it can't be in their neighborhood, as close as possible. And that may, and that means, you know, staying in district. That for many families, their long-term goal is for their children to be able to participate with typical peers as much as is possible. And so being part of your neighborhood school is part of that. A lot of families express that the generalization of skills learned at school is critical. So what, you know, they receive reports at school that the child can do, you know, X, Y, and Z and they want to really work on making sure that happens outside of school. So we have to support families, sometimes we have families come in and we do coaching sessions and modeling sessions for our strategies in that way and it's helpful. And they've also expressed that, you know, they feel because of the level of complication with some of these students that they feel it's appropriate to have a high level of school-home communication and partnership and in many cases that means daily communication. Some outcomes, social and academic. We've had an increase in our typical peer applications for the pre-K from the community, which is a great thing for us. It's been a little bit of a challenge because we can't accept as many students as we would like, but it's provided a really rich social environment for all students, including those with disabilities. Our best buddies programs have flourished at the high school and SIS and even so much as receiving awards at the state and regional level. Our transition students have participated in bi-weekly social and community outings and events and they continue to expand those. Our therapeutic program has participated in community service projects, which has been a really great avenue for them for, you know, having another focus of their time. And students at Perry Hill, SIS, and the high school have had greater access to participate in extracurriculars. A lot of that has to do with efforts on the staff's end, whether they be advisors to those extracurriculars or not, to ensure that there are appropriate participation options for them. Academically, we've had an increase in students participating in either general education or adjusted curriculum academic instruction, so pig to your question, more students in the specialized program not receiving all their academics in that setting. We've had more students taking the S-Back and district assessments with accommodations instead of necessarily taking the alternative assessment from the state and more students with IEP academic goals that are related to the Common Core. So in summary, you know, we believe that diversified programs allow for, allow for higher levels of students to participate in either a neighborhood school or a school close to their neighborhood, that our expansion of programs has increased our ability to educate the most complicated of students and that we continue as always and will never stop working towards seamless programming between general and special ed.
We had a lot of kids outplaced right after Ripken closed. Percentage-wise, I know there's more kids, but percentage-wise, are we in better shape with having all these programs in district? We have less percentage outplacement?
We don't have less, we are, we've stayed relatively about the same. Yeah. So we have about 700, where am I?
733.
733.
15% of our students.
Have disabilities.
Meet the requirements.
Right, have disabilities and I, don't quote me, I want to say 34 of the 733 are outplacement. And that's, that's a district outplacement, that's not magnet schools or Fairchild Wheeler or school chains. Right. What we have seen is a change in the type of student who requires outplacement. So students who, you know, are intellectually impaired, we are educating more in district than we used to. We still have some who are outplaced who are intellectually impaired, but more often those students are educated in district. Students who most often are outplaced are, number one, medically complex or medically fragile, students with complex psychiatric issues. We do have complex students on the autism spectrum who we have attempted in district program and led toward to outplacements. And then we have a mix from there. But I would say the ID classification, the intellectually disabled, those students are being educated more in district than previously. Yes.
For the 18 and, 18 to 21 transitions, how many students are in, approximately?
For the eighteen and, eighteen to twenty-one transitions, how many students are in, approximately how many students are in?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four? And how many support staff do we have for those twenty-four?
We have one, one teacher and four job coaches.
One teacher and four. Okay.
And I'm sorry, the psychol, the speech and language pathologist at the high school provides services to those students, but that's not, you know, it's not a huge amount of time.
Okay. And the other thing, when, when we look at the, the numbers, and I think maybe you would be better off to clarify this, because when we look at the numbers of students in, in the schools, and we see the preschool, right now, obviously, the three-year-olds, there's, there's not as many in proportion. Do, when does, when does that kind of catch up? Does it, is, or does it increase during the year, like every month you might add one or two?
It does. We add every month.
You add every month.
So every week, we hold referral eligibility meetings for three- to five-year-olds. Literally every week, we get new referrals. So we have already added four new students this school year, only one to the threes, and it just so happens, three to the four-year-olds. Typically, you get far more three-year-old referrals than you get four-year-olds. It just so happens since September one, we've gotten more fours than threes. But we can see from the birth to three system from the state, we can see the state database of kids who are in birth to three, who live in Shelton, who are going to be turning three in the next six months. So we know exactly three-year-olds, who's coming, and the, the numbers are coming. Usually by March, the classes are almost at full capacity, if not at capacity for the three-year-olds. We'll see if all those kids end up qualifying.
Okay. And I noticed that now, two teachers will teach the three-year-olds and two teachers teach the four-year-olds.
Yes.
That's a new.
We, we, we shifted that. And the number one reason, so typically, in our pre-K, our AM was always three-year-olds, and all four teachers taught a three-year-old class in the morning, and all four taught a three-year, a four-year-old class, excuse me, in the afternoon. What ended up happening as far as, almost all students in special education in pre-K require speech and language services, number one. And I would say many, many of them require occupational therapy services. Because all the three-year-olds in the morning and all the four-year-olds are in the afternoon, we were having a hard time with, with the speech and language groupings, that they were becoming four or five three-year-olds, because we couldn't spread them out across the entire day. We only had basically a two-and-a-half-hour window to service them. So the teachers actually came up with this suggestion of adjusting it with just threes and just fours. And so far, the feedback has been good. On the whole.
It's kind of like looping.
Well, and we, and we haven't committed to looping yet. We said we're going to give ourselves to the, to the midway point to determine that. But I would say almost all parents got their request of AM or PM.
Oh, good.
Because we did pull them in and said, you know, if we can accommodate, we're going to try to accommodate what your request is in terms of sticking with an AM or PM. And it's, it's been working so far. And the teachers have been happy because they can really stick to their curriculum and commit and kind of dig in instead of morning, afternoon.
And that's working with the three-year-olds in the afternoon when that?
Believe it or not, they figured the naps out.
Wow.
I, that was a legitimate concern.
Yeah.
From the teachers too, knowing that some of these kids coming in. So far.
I had to break a four-year-old to adapt to go to kindergarten.
And my last question, is there a, a maximum that you take in, in the three-year-old program and the four, for the year? Like, I mean, does it not exceed ten or twelve, or?
We can't cut off.
You can't?
No. You know, if the students come in with disability and they're legitimately eligible and they're between three and five years old, we are required to service them.
It's just your ratio gets thrown, right?
Our ratio gets thrown. The, the, that's, that's the exact point. So that's why we, we start knowing that we are going to grow. And in years past, some of our classes have ended with thirteen kids, fourteen kids, which is a lot, especially when, you know, two-thirds might have disabilities. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a fairly small number of outplacements. Is it realistic to try to expand our in-district capabilities to reduce the number of outplacements? Because I know that costs for outplacements tend to be ferocious.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. It's always a goal of ours to expand further. We've expanded significantly at the elementary level. I think the next step would be looking at secondary and looking how we can expand at the secondary level that maybe we don't, maybe our diversification of programs is good, maybe it's, it could be better. But maybe the number of sections that we have, because once you get to secondary, you start talking about sections, you start talking about numbers of, of classes because of the change in the schedule. Maybe we need more than one section or more than one classroom of a certain program.
on esports. So Shelton High School is one of the leaders in the state in esports.
But I think that's a question worth investigating.
Now, is your sense that this is something that would be able to be done in a way that
And if you're not familiar with some of the intricacies of esports, it's like other sports.
would pay for itself within one budget year?
And there are lots of international competitions, and there are people that excel in it that
Or is this liable to be something where we're going to need to throw extra money into startup costs?
It really depends on, well, we'll say, take the high school, for example.
become millionaires, just like in other sports. There are plenty of kids that excel in it and use it as a ticket into college where
It would depend very much on by January, what the state is of the eighth grade, and
there are programs.
what those numbers look like coming up.
So it, it's something, if you're of a certain age, like my age, it is something that did
Because if they remain relatively flat, it's a lot easier to control.
not exist when we were kids, but it is something that certainly exists now and of the pioneering,
If you have a lot more kids who are eligible than was expected in September, then you're talking about, well, if you're going to expand further, then you're going to have to add
and this is really not an exaggeration of any kind, of the pioneering high schools in
resources. Just one, one fact.
Connecticut that have started this. Shelton High is one of them.
Budget season is coming.
And they have a winning record, and the kids are very engaged.
Yes. As budget season is coming soon.
And I'll be providing you with more information, but I did send you a link that you can go
Any other questions?
Thank you.
to, and you can actually see it livestreamed, and you can see some of the competitions and
Thank you very much. That was a very informative presentation.
that sort of thing. And it's very interesting, and, and for many of us, it's a whole new world, but it's certainly not a whole new world for our students. Some great teachers are leading the way, by the way, in our district on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Let's see. Okay, next item is approved field trips, which is for information only. The junior statesmen of America are going to be going to Washington, D.C. to visit historical landmarks, February eighth through eleventh. Board action items presented for a vote, consideration of the board to approve the Booster Club sponsorship banner, administrative regulations that have been reviewed, and they are attached.
So move.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to add that we have discussed this at many policy meetings, and as of the last policy meeting, there was actually no further discussion. We reviewed what you see in front of you, and Mr. Niski was in agreement, and he feels that if approved, the banners will probably first be viable for the winter sports season.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Shelton High School a donation from the Connecticut Association of Schools of a Pixelot camera, approximate value forty-eight-hundred to five-thousand dollars, to be used for streaming of athletic contests with the NFHS.
So move.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Shelton High School a donation of two-thousand dollars from former Shelton High School math teacher, Richard Loris, to be used for math instructional supplies.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
I would just like to know, I already talked to Dave, I mean, to add, the instructional supplies, who was purchasing them?
I'm not sure what you mean by what indiv, you mean department.
He's giving money, he, this is a donation.
Yes.
To the department, but it has to come to us first.
That's correct.
Okay. And then who's making the decisions on how that's being spent?
Well, the math department would coordinate with Tina and, and work on coordinating on, on what the precise things would be.
Is it safe to assume that these instructional materials are those which are above and beyond what they would normally be using?
Yes.
And is there, and I don't even know if this is already present. I know there was like a, my daughter was at the high school, there was a calculator. Are there calculators for the kids that cannot afford to buy them already available?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if that would be needed under this, but yeah.
Any other discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll just say, I think that's awfully nice of one of our retired teachers to do such a thing. Okay. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Shelton High School a donation of four-thousand dollars from the former Shelton High School math teacher, Richard Loris, to be used for math instructional supplies.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
I would just like to know, I already talked to Dave, I mean, to add, the instructional supplies, who was purchasing them?
I'm not sure what you mean by what indiv, you mean department.
He's giving money, he, this is a donation.
Yes.
To the department, but it has to come to us first.
That's correct.
Okay. And then who's making the decisions on how that's being spent?
Well, the math department would coordinate with Tina and, and work on coordinating on, on what the precise things would be.
Is it safe to assume that these instructional materials are those which are above and beyond what they would normally be using?
Yes.
And is there, and I don't even know if this is already present. I know there was like a, my daughter was at the high school, there was a calculator. Are there calculators for the kids that cannot afford to buy them already available?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if that would be needed under this, but yeah.
Any other discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll just say, I think that's awfully nice of one of our retired teachers to do such a thing. Okay. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Shelton High School a donation of four-thousand dollars from the Weller Foundation for the Aerospace Flight Simulator.
So move.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Can board members ride it?
Maybe after hours.
I saw one of those devices at a program over the summer that was installed at SIS, and it was an incredible device. Really amazing.
Where's it going to be housed?
I believe it is going to be housed, there's been some discussion about alternate spaces, but in, in an area near where the former Family Consumer Science area was, they have some space that would make this a lab.
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Elizabeth Shelton School a donation of fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents from the Elizabeth Shelton School PTO to purchase an amplifier, wireless rack mount system, including a handheld microphone and cable.
So move. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to know if there is an extended warranty like that?
I don't think we're liable to be able to get that information at the moment.
If I had known in advance that was a question, I would have looked into it, but we can certainly find out.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Mohegan School a donation from the Mohegan School PTO of two outdoor adjustable height basketball groups for the playground with an approximate cost of four-thousand dollars. All costs to be incurred by the Mohegan School PTO.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Just a question on the installation fee. Does that double as well, or?
Should it be one ninety-nine each for install, installation?
I believe the total was supposed to be four thousand.
No, but see where it says with installation fee of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, but that was for one. So would, would that be for two?
I would venture, I guess it's probably the hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for each one, so doubling it.
So who pays up that cost?
They are.
As mentioned.
Yeah, all, all fees to be incurred by the Mohegan School PTO.
So, I mean.
This is going, and it's not going to impact their parking?
No. Well, it wouldn't be used when, when cars are parked there. So it, I mean, it wouldn't be used when kids are being dropped off in the morning and that's an issue. I'd pick it up in the afternoon.
Okay. Any other questions? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve the request of the PSLAC committee and Shelton High School Boys Basketball Team to conduct fundraising activities for the 2017-18 school year.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
We haven't one.
Okay. Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve the 2018 Board of Education meeting schedule, the following dates, January twenty-fourth, February twenty-eighth, March twenty-eighth, April twenty-fifth, May twenty-third, June twenty-seventh, July twenty-fifth, August twenty-second, September twenty-sixth, October twenty-fourth, November twenty-eighth, and December nineteenth. In this particular year, the only one that's not really on our normal meeting night would be the December meeting. November, it would be far enough from Thanksgiving that we would keep our regular date. Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item number nine, consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Mohegan School a donation of three-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the Mohegan School PTO to purchase guided reading books for classrooms.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
What question is this?
Yeah.
Are these reading books, are they in addition to the curriculum?
No, they support them.
They support the curriculum.
Classroom libraries primarily.
Right. Because their classroom libraries don't.
The reading workshop, the children read in their own.
Just write books.
So in other words, this is, well, this is in addition to what they have, because why would they have to do that? Why, why aren't we paying for that?
Yeah, they're just adding additional books to the classroom libraries.
And they're supplementing.
A lot of buildings, when you have a lot of new teachers, they have less books when you start out.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I just wanna say, all of what we just did, $17,937 in donations, and thank you for the.
Thank you to all, everybody that worked so hard to give it.
Phenomenal.
That is. Okay. Comments by the board chair? A reminder, we do have our meet the candidates night tomorrow evening for those of us who are running for reelection and people in the audience who are running for election. I've gotta say that the program that was held two years ago by the teachers' union and the JSA was incredibly well done, and I think that some of the TV networks could learn something about how to handle a debate from our students, they really did a terrific job with it, and I think that having tomorrow's event at SIS will make it a more comfortable event for our spectators and will probably be a better one for the acoustics, so I'm looking forward to that. We do have our elections coming up real soon, for everybody watching, be sure to vote early and vote often.
Often.
And with that, we'll move on to reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our teaching and learning committee met Tuesday, October 10th, there were two items on our agenda, one was the teacher evaluation and support plan overview, they were handouts, short discussion by our assistant superintendent, and second was a district enrollment numbers as was requested, the enrollment number handout reflecting the first four days of the academic school year. Again, there was some discussion from members of the committee, led also by Lorraine Rosner, our assistant superintendent. Superintendent commented that STEM night at ESS was well attended and gratitude extended to all who contributed, there were no other items for discussion, my only comment was for the public, Shelton Day was a wonderful opportunity to see our students showcased, great experience, and more importantly, all of us know that our mayor was the marshal for the Unity Day Columbus parade in Bridgeport. Again, we had the opportunity to showcase Shelton High School and the intermediate school band, it was well accepted and there were a lot of hand clapping as our students walked by. Other than that, our next meeting date is going to be tentatively scheduled for November 14th at 4:00 p.m. As you know, Election Day, as Mark just mentioned, assuming and hopefully, we will be able to conduct a good meeting at that time.
Okay, all righty, and anything else?
So moved.
Okay, finance committee.
Mr. Chairman, we met last week, we reviewed our current expenditures, we took one last look at last year's expenditures, it looks like around $5,000 will be where we return to the city. We did have one motion, and it was a rec- it was to recommend that the full board authorize the superintendent and finance director to proceed with rate locks for both natural gas and electricity, it appears by doing this, we will be able to save the district some serious money.
Okay, and you made that as a motion?
That was a motion, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, policy committee.
Okay, policy, as previously discussed, the banner discussion, we did not have discussion and we've already approved those administrative regs. There was also discussion about the National Federation for High School Sports School Broadcasting and the proceeds from the subscriptions from, from those broadcasts, and the discussion was such that we kind of came to a consensus that the proceeds from any subscriptions go into a special line item to maintain and replace the camera equipment from usage over overcoming years. At the time of the meeting, the cost of the installation and purchase of the equipment was still not firm, and the pricing on the, that line item we referred to finance, which was also discussed briefly at finance. There was a discussion at the request of one of our new, our new board member about board of ed members on social media, we talked about the importance of not using reply all because that might constitute a quorum and make a, make call a meeting. That's that only the chair or the superintendent can speak for the Board of Education, those are the major topics, although there was quite a lot of talk about social media presence. And finally, the biggest item we talked about, we spent quite a great deal of time on the new policy that is in your packet, 1324.2, online fundraising campaign crowdfunding. We went through it line by line, discussing, changing things, we, the focus of all of our adjustments were that the fundraising would be allowed to school-related groups, not individuals. Board of Ed members see the things in red, which were the changes from what we were presented with at that meeting. Mr. Manati pointed out an extra S in number three and the absence of a comma in number six, which I will pass along to Lorraine Rosner. Dr. Ritter, did you find anything else in your editing?
No. I went through it carefully, it was good, you did good.
So, I'd like to make a motion, and I don't know if you wanna make this as two motions or as one motion, but a motion to approve this new policy for online fundraising campaigns, crowdfunding, as presented and amended with the editorial, but to waive a waiting period till the next meeting because several people present felt it was important to get this in presence in the school system so people know it's expected and what's not expected.
Okay.
So that's.
Do we have a mechanism, if I can ask a point of privilege here, do we have a mechanism to waive that requirement?
We do have the ability to waive a bylaw in our bylaws.
So that would be a separate motion, would be to waive the bylaw first?
Why don't I start then with a separate motion to waive the bylaw on this policy?
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to waive the bylaw for the purposes of this one policy, is there a discussion?
Yeah, the motion is, is awful vague, shouldn't it reference, we're waiving the requirement for a one-month waiting period, but whatever the policies.
Till the next meeting, that it sit till the next meeting.
Yeah.
That defines it though.
I think, I think it is clear to those who are present though that that.
I understand that, but, but we're capturing this, and this becomes a, an official record of the.
Do we know what bylaw we're waiving, do we have a number?
I'll look that up, if you give me a moment.
I don't have the, I don't have the bylaw, no, I have the policy.
Okay.
I mean, you could just enter, you know, you, we could place that afterwards, you know, because I don't want to slow things down, but, you know, this is a, an official record, and it's gonna document things in the future, so.
Yep, so the motion then, Diane, is to.
Why don't we get the number afterwards?
Okay, we'll get the number afterwards.
We'll insert the number of the bylaw requirement.
Is established part of the.
But we're going to waive the waiting period till.
One person at a time, I'm having a hard time.
Sorry.
Gathering this, could you repeat the motion?
Okay, the, the motion is to waive the bylaw regulation, that a new policy sit till the next meeting for final approval.
Second, okay, motion has been made and seconded, discussion?
And the reason we're, we're doing this waiver is what, Kate?
Because of a, a number of staff that have been trying to do online fun, online fundraising on their own, and we wanna make sure if people know what is expected, Mr..
Okay, but doesn't this new policy say staff can't do it?
Correct.
They don't know that till they get the policy.
But, but there's no policy now, so that they really can't do it anyway.
But, but.
They were doing it, don't have that to put, he's coming.
The idea, Mr. Roble, is that we would allow groups and programs to do it, and we wanna make sure it were crystal clear so that all staff members get what the, to Kate's point, what is allowed and what isn't allowed, and the quicker we get that out there, the more time there'll be people, the more time there will be for individuals to discuss it and understand it.
And, and a major thing of the policy is that any group that goes ahead and does this has to go through the usual, usual procedures.
Yes.
To get their fundraising approved by the board like PTOs do.
And, and I can appreciate that, I, I'm just, I would like to caution us that we put the waiver in years and years ago so that there was ample opportunity for, for comment, both at a committee meeting and at a regular board meeting about policies of the Board of Education.
Okay, for the record, the policy number is 9311, and the motion to waive the delay would need to pass by a two-thirds majority, otherwise it fails.
Can I make another comment?
Yeah.
I believe there's not a sense of, of us rushing this at this point since it's been discussed at many meetings and we've really deliberated in an in-depth manner on this set of issues related to crowdfunding, and there was a concern that as we approach the end of the calendar year, we wanna make sure it gets into people's hands so there'll be time for the actual educators and practitioners to grapple with it and understand it, and there was at least a feeling, and I won't speak for the whole group, but I think you would agree, that the, the assembled committee felt comfortable with that.
Yes, because.
And I, Chris, I appreciate that, and I think, I think this is probably an appropriate waiver, I just would not wanna see the board moving forward take this as a normal course of action.
Yes, yeah, I, I hear you, absolutely, yeah.
Call the vote, okay. Sensing that we are ready to vote, all in favor of waiving the requirement of 9311 to delay passage until the next meeting, please say aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously, which clearly meets the two-thirds majority, okay, now.
And now I make a motion to approve policy, new policy number 1324.2 under Community Relations, online fundraising campaigns for crowdfunding.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, just on the numbering, I don't know that we need, because she has a couple of question marks in there, like this.
I thought she just.
Point two, something or something, I, I, that, you know, I don't.
Well, actually, the understanding should be that the. The number. The number may change slightly based on the state numbering conventions, CAVE has a specific numbering convention, this is our best guesstimate of what they would assign.
Okay.
Especially being a new law.
And order it to move forward.
Okay, other questions?
Call the call.
Sensing we are ready to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And that's it for policy, our next meeting also is tentative for November 14th, pending agenda items, which we currently have done that I am aware of.
Okay, all righty, our reports of special committees, CES.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, CES met on October 5th, three items that I think might pertain to us, one of them is the fact that Title I, II, and III grants are required to be completed in the new system and due in October, however, further checking, Shelton is on target, and I believe applications have been completed. Second of all, the district does not have to adhere to the CES time schedule, however, since we have many students in the CES programs, we have to follow it because of vacations, days off, and so forth, but again, it was mentioned that maybe in the future, we could readjust our own schedule. Last but not least, on October 20th, Peggy Sullivan, who is the Director of Finance and Operations for CES, conducted a meeting on October 20th for all finance directors in the CES consortium. Dave Drapp, our finance director, attended and indicated that he would say a few words to us tonight, the focus was on transportation issues.
Again, I think, I think it was very timely, since we are going out for transportation, but they were looking for ways for districts to share transportation costs, whether it be regular transportation or individual special education runs. So there are a number of districts going out to bid for July 1 of 2018, so the thought was CES would conduct a regional bid based on those districts' interests to participate, however, would not slow down their local process, so we, I'll be meeting with Mr. Sullivan, we have the documents ready to go, the bid documents ready to go, so that needs to go through the city process, so we'll do that, and simultaneously, CES will be running a regional transportation bid, the districts will have the option of choosing the option and the results that best suit, suits their needs. I also, it was talked about Southern Connecticut, they transporta- they transport a number of students to CES programs, we have two students in particular that go to programs in Southport and one in Norwalk, so districts were encouraged to talk to one another with CES brokering those discussions, so I'm looking into saying if there's a bus heading in that direction from CES, that's empty, where we can just transport the students to CES, and then another district, we pick up that at a much lower cost than private transportation. So we have a number of forms that people are filling in and seeing what we can do to potentially save some costs sharing transportation and/or individual private transportation. Thank you.
It's good news.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay, and Kate?
We have an attachment that's, that's in your packet, nothing less shaking or new, just to remind you about the CAVE convention, which is in, which is next month, otherwise there's nothing, there's just the usual fare, so, and you have a list, you can follow it.
Chris, will, will your administrator person be handling our registrations like they have in the past?
Yes, and so.
Yes, I've asked if people wanted to attend, are you?
Yeah, I don't know if I got that, assuming I get reelected, yes.
So what I would recommend is that each of the duly elected board members send an email to Diane indicating your interest, and then, and then she would take care of it.
We have two slots reserved for two new board members.
Right, you just number one and number two.
Yes, you're all set.
Number one, you can do a number two, and then they can take it after the election, but they have a provision for that.
Look, we're already at the point where there's no, no savings for registering now versus a week or so for now, so, okay, okay, anything else under Kate?
No.
Okay, all right, unfinished business, I'm not aware of any, new business, I'm not aware of any, we have the vacancy report attached, and the staff and stipend actions attached, and the enrollment reports for October 1 and October 18th are attached.
Could I add a, a four-year information, it's a very controversial issue, and we're aware that at Mohegan School in grade two, we've had some high enrollment classes, and it was a concern, and I visited those classes, and the teachers were doing a fabulous job given the student enrollment, but we have decided that we're going to move from another site in the district, a tutor to, to help with those two classes, and that will start on Monday, so that there'll be an ability for some small group instruction to happen in the adjacent room, which will lower the amount of students in the room at the same time and give more individualized instruction.
So you have an extra space that that tutor can use?
There's a space that's used for tutoring, that, a tutor that goes between one building and another, and when she's not there, then we're gonna have this other person there for that, yeah, so.
So it pulls some of the bodies out of you.
Exactly.
Is that in, in an effort to also save some money because we're really watching things, or?
Well, we, we do believe, well, it will save money in comparison to hiring a new staff member, and, and so, yes, but we, we think that this is a, a system that will work for the teachers and will support the kids.
And it's hard for them to make a transition as far into the year.
Yeah.
If you were to create a.
Yeah, yeah, very true.
Okay, all righty, next item, highlights, anybody have something for highlights?
We went to the, several of us were at the Teacher of the Year Dinner, which was wonderful, and we got a nice thank you note today. Now I'm seeing her face, and now I'm pulling a blank on her name.
Christine.
Christine Danner, so it was a lovely event, lots of party jokes here and there, very nice, good food, too.
Yes.
I sent her a thank, I sent her a thank you email for the thank you, because it was so nice.
Can anybody else under highlights?
Just give John Scarrick a special award.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is my last meeting.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
You guys can't keep me hanging around forever.
No, there's one more meeting in November because our meeting will be before the inauguration.
When is the inauguration?
It will be.
Yes, inauguration is the 21st.
November 16th, I think.
And our meeting will be, I think, on the 15th because of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's early this.
All right.
Nobody wants to come in on the night before Thanksgiving.
So, one more ones.
Yep.
One more ones.
Anybody else under highlights?
I do.
Oh, okay.
I, I will, Kathy and I went to Valley Goes Pink.
Oh, well, we went to Mohegan.
November 15. Mohegan School, and Valley Goes Pink, and it was a wonderful, activity-filled morning and early afternoon, and everyone did a wonderful job, and the kids were all excited.
They raised a lot of money, I think probably well over $1,500, which is really good, and then, well, we mentioned about our, we went to the Chabut House School too, remember? And for their reading incentive, summer reading incentive, where they had a great participat- participate, participating in the.
Participatory.
Dr. Z, how, how many kids participated, I think it was like about two-thirds of the school, or almost not, more than that?
One, one very cute little blonde boy in particular, at least.
Yes. We gave him his choice of bookmark, and he wanted to take two, so, we had a part of the list.
We had a policy.
We had a policy, and we, we didn't wanna get our hands slapped, but it was very, it was very good, and it was nice to see all those kids taking part in summer reading.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, and I also wanna say a special thank you to John Calhoun, I have to say that I am very, very impressed with all that he's done and he undertakes, and gets everything done so quickly.
Yeah.
He is a definite asset to our school system, so thank you, John.
His reports each month, you really know, that's, I, I used to be on Buildings and Grounds Committee when we used to have it, and we've got more information there than we ever had in all the years I was on that committee.
He's doing. And Mr. Drapp, you're also doing a wonderful job, and thank you too, that's it.
Our, our finance committee means are absolutely loaded with useful information. Anybody else under highlights?
Yeah, I have something, I just wanted to mention that I stopped at a high school a couple weeks ago to get my security badge, and Headmaster Smith was there, and she very generously offered to take me for a tour of a high school, and she led me all around the high school, and I got to see all the different areas and. me all around the high school, um, and I got to see all the different areas and- and the labs, and I met several teachers and several terrific students, and I just thought that was really, um, you know, sort of above and beyond for her to do that and- and spend the time with me to- to show me around, so I appreciated that.
That's really great, 'cause you sat at the back-to-school night, and you've never ever been in that building, so that's a great opportunity.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else under highlights? Okay, I understand Pam would like to make an announcement.
Yes, I would, hi, everybody, I'm Pam Garrett, I'm a teacher at the high school, um, and actually I'm an advisor of a club on campus, um, which is DECA, and it's a business and marketing club. I'm very excited to, um, let you know that we have an upcoming family event, which is the Color Run, we're hosting a Color Run on the Shelton turf, which is November eleventh, and it's a great event for kids and families to come out and enjoy a five K and a children's fun run. The benefits go for, um, go towards DECA and FBLA programs, as well as boys and girls cross-country, so hope to see it.
Do you have to run, or can you walk?
You can walk, you can absolutely walk, but you will get, you will get color on you, so.
No problems, Mrs. Appley.
Looks like she's already been hit.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
All right. Good, thanks, Pam. I have a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, uh, first, uh, the state budget, they do have an agreement that, uh, is likely to pass, is my understanding. Frankly, there are some provisions in that budget that I'm concerned about as far as how it will impact the Shelton Board of Education. Uh, I have expressed my concerns to our local legislators, uh, we'll see what happens, but, uh, there are some things that could have a fi- negative financial impact on us, and also, there's a provision that would call for the, uh, Board of A and T to participate in our hiring process, which is a bit troubling to me, because essentially, these are people who haven't been educated on what's needed for education, and, uh, I just think, you know, we do a lot of training of our board members, that they have a better understanding of what they're doing, and of course, we have highly qualified professional staff who is involved in these things, and, um, bringing in people who don't have anything to do with education just seems like a mistake. Otherwise, I wanted to make a second mention of the Shelton Day appearance by the Shelton High School, uh, various organizations, they were large and in charge, and, uh, you know, we had a huge presence there, and I was impressed with it, and I felt really good. Otherwise, it's been a real busy month, and, uh, I'm sorry I missed the Teacher of the Year Dinner, I was down in Florida helping my dad deal with water damage, uh, his ice maker water line let go, and so, for about a week before he got there, uh, he had a ninety PSI water pistol with an endless supply of water spraying in his kitchen, and that caused lots of damage, so.[1782.62]